Seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the New Brunswick Public Schools Board of Education meeting. I'll read the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 21st, 2018, to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Iron Street in New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Mrs. Shikitis.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Here.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Wonderful. Dr. Johnson, will you lead us in the process? Bye.
Ladies and gentlemen, our presentations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, unthwarted, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM, right here, the New Brunswick High School Auditorium. Item number three of the minutes, is there a motion to accept the July 17th? Miss Homel, second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. The Facilities Committee report, Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President, the Facility Committee, I mean Committee, did not meet this month, but we're reporting next month at the September meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. The Policy Committee report, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, there were nine policies reviewed, of which seven were revised and two are new. I would need a motion to accept the policies, first reading.
Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
So, if I may, that resolution and items are actually part of the consent agenda, so we'll just take a moment.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it too? Okay. Item number six, the Athletic Committee report, Ms. Sadowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletic Committee met earlier this afternoon. It was a little short meeting. The fall sports, it started as of August 7th. We have a full contingent for our boys soccer team. This is one of the first years that we had to actually have a cut. We had more students than we were allowed to carry on the varsity. Cross-country, we're going to be having a boy soccer, we're going to have freshmen JV and varsity. Cross-country, we're having varsity. Girls soccer, freshman JV and varsity. Girls tennis, varsity. Thirteen young ladies have come out for tennis. Football, freshman JV and varsity. And cheerleading, we have 25 cheerleaders, varsity. Middle school, every sport is at capacity. We're going to be partnering with the Civic League, and some of our high school students are going to be going down into the middle school, à la Play It Smart, and they're going to encourage our younger students to that mindset of that your grades are important and starting in sixth grade, that it means something when you're in high school, or else you could possibly be ineligible to play. The first football game is going to be September 7th, and it's against Woodbridge. We only have three home games this fall season. The 31st, there is a scrimmage, which is going to be home, and I think it's against There's some things, the high school athletics field, scoreboards, new scoreboards were ordered for baseball, soccer, and softball. Possibility of gym floors being redone, and that's basically about it. It's a short report, and we're looking forward to a successful fall season. Thank you.
Mrs. Sadowski, is there a financial report? Do we have a motion?
No, I didn't. Was there? I didn't get it.
Do we do a motion?
Yes, motion for the July 2018 athletic report.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved. Wonderful.
Item number seven, the Curriculum Committee report, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, I did not have the opportunity to attend the Curriculum Committee report due to illness. I would like to pass it out to Ms. Seawood, who did attend. She give the report for us, please? If you remember.
The curriculum committee met, I believe it was two weeks ago, on a Tuesday afternoon. The curriculum committee did discuss agenda items A through I. We discussed new... We discussed some programs that were being approved in our Adult Learning Center, as well as a new program through Rutgers that is going to be meeting the needs of our students and really listening to student voices. We're going to hold that program in all of our middle-grade schools, including our high school, and that concludes my curriculum report.
Excellent. Item number eight, the Public Relations Committee report, Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. For this month, I would just like to announce that the high school will be having kiosks, more kiosks, in the cafeteria so that students can see the meals that are going to be available and have better access to the meals, if I'm not mistaken. So, that's all I'm going to report on for this meeting. Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Again, the normal summer work. The Commission does have summer school programs, and it's actually working on an exciting program that I'll talk about a little later in the year that deals with students over 21. So, that's the report. And then I'll stay on the mic with the President's report. So, this is an exciting time for me. I've been on the board for 20 years, but this is the first time I've had a daughter who's going into the high school. So, I get a chance to really see things through the eyes of students. And so, she is so excited about coming here to New Brunswick High School. The communication's been very good. She's on the varsity tennis team, and so they had some challenge matches today. And so, I've got a chance to see Mike Mitchell, who's certainly one of the most dedicated, he's our bowling coach, but also the tennis coach. This guy has three-hour-a-day practices, you know, every week, you know, before school. And it's just the young ladies have come out, you heard the number, have come out. It's a dedicated group, and it's just nice to see how special this district is, at least from the, you know, from the tennis netbook. And her friends who are playing soccer and some other things are having a good time. That sports and that out-of-classroom stuff is so important, so it's nice to see that. Then going back in the summer, and I just compliment Dr. Johnson, Ms. Scusa, for the wonderful summer program that they put together. I don't think people know how spectacular and how much work it went into planning, every aspect of the summer program. And this year, we actually, Larry Dillon, who was a tennis pro, we tied up tennis with math that actually increased the enrollment, and it was great on both ends. The academics were great, the tennis was great. Literally, like 75 young people want to play tennis now because of that. So, this summer, and you're just getting it warmed up, so next summer is going to be even better. But, again, because I have a daughter, I got to see more of the program, and just so proud of what you're doing, and I think those out there should be very pleased with what's going on here at the district. So, I don't know if you want to add anything, but it was a good summer.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell, for those words of encouragement. Just basically, I just wanted to say that we are trying our best to do what needs to be done. There's a lot more room for improvement as we begin this school year, just to report to the board and just to respond to your question regarding the summer program. For the past couple of years, we have revamped our summer programs, and we have targeted with very strong programs that we know would impact student achievement, but also at the same time make them want to come to summer school to learn something that was different. But what we're doing right now in that process is evaluating the impact of our summer program. We, on the outskirts, may feel that it was good, but we won't know until we continue to evaluate it. Some things that we have put in place already, we had students complete surveys regarding the summer programs. We have surveys that have been sent to staff members to tell us not only the good, but how we can improve it. I've put some measures in to measure student attendance, faculty attendance. We have some mini benchmarks, projects that we want to see the beginning and the end. And right now, I have a team that is actually going to evaluate all summer programs and get back to us to let us know what was good and what we need to make it stronger next year. So, I just wanted to let you know, on the outskirts, it may look good. We want to believe it's good, but we won't know until we pull that data, and I'll be able to give you some type of report back later on. In terms of the school year, we are... I know the team, I know the principals, I met them today for the first time during our retreat. We have a three-day retreat. They're interviewing. Vacancy rates are getting minimal as we get closer, but we're also challenged because every day we do receive someone who has resigned and took a job someplace else that was closer to home. So, that's the challenge during the summer. But I'm comfortable. It was great to meet with the principals, not only the principals, the principals, directors, supervisors, today, to see them come back and ready to go and motivated to start the school year, I thought was pretty great. So, I have a real, real good feeling moving into next year. Thank you.
And finally, I'll add that Ms. Sadowski, Mr. Hush, and I were at the robotics, at the robotics championship, and that was the first time I'd attended. And that was really nicely done, and my daughter was in that program for a while, but she was away. They do such a great job with the young people. So, anybody who doubts the capacity of our students doesn't know our students, and so they did some amazing things, and it was just nice to be there and see the championships. It was great. So, with that, we'll move on to public comments. Are there any public comments? If you can say your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor of this great city. I'd like to ask about a couple of agenda items, right off the bat, letter S. Can we hear a little bit about the corrective action plan?
Yes, Mr. General.
So, each year, the Office of Fiscal Compliance and Accountability, as you know, reviews and audits at least one early childhood provider. We finally received a report for the 2015-16 school year, and this corrective action plan is all the items that they pointed out. There was nothing that was a bad violation. It was all dotting their i's and crossing their t's type of things that need to fix, and I can certainly send you a complete copy of it if you wish. Thank you, sir. On the follow-up. AJ is the CUSAC District Improvement Plan. Can we hear a little about that?
Ms. Scusa.
Every three years, CUSAC comes in to evaluate the school. We received our CUSAC information back from the county office, and we've developed a plan to note four different areas that we are really improving our overall school performance. Those areas are ELA, MAT, our graduation rate, and supports for students who are struggling. So, we've put a complete plan in place that we're going to carry out over the course of the school year to improve those areas.
Thank you. And still on topic of the county superintendent, there's a new county superintendent. Can you ask, Dr. Johnson, have you had a chance to meet with the new superintendent for the county?
Yes, I have a couple of times.
Great. AK is the merit goals for Dr. Johnson. Can I just hear a little about what those merit goals are and which ones have been met this year?
Yes, Dr. Johnson. You want... What is your question? We'd like to know what the merit goals are for the upcoming year.
And also which ones you met for the current...
So, the merit goals for this coming year that I'm asking the board to take a look at is some of them are actually the same as last year. My merit goals are based on student achievement and student performance. Last year, one of the merit goals was to improve our algebra scores on the park assessment for students to increase by three percentage points or more. Last year, I would like to say that the students increased by five percentage points in algebra. Algebra statewide is depressed in a lot of districts. I do not find 15% passers rate accepted, but we have grown, and I want to continue that charge this year moving into next year. So, this year, again, I'm sticking with the same goal to improve student performance on algebra. Second goal that I have is also in terms of reading. Third grade, by the end of third grade, I expect students to continue to improve from the beginning of the year assessment to the end of the year. We use a assessment called the Diagnostic and Reading Assessment, the DRA, and I'm expecting a growth rate of about six percentage points, as I have that fluctuates. I remember my first year, I did not make that, but this last year I did, and I want to continue to meet those goals. Another goal that I set last year in terms of quantitative methods was to reduce our chronic absenteeism rate, and that is a goal that I did not last year. Wanted to, I think I may have made a very lofty ambition, four percentage points, and actually we did not decrease, we actually increased. So, it went the other way, down a percentage point. So, we started the work last year to create Chronic Absenteeism Task Force. I want to believe that some of the groundwork that we believe we started last year may impact this year, but we know some of the pockets in terms of chronic absenteeism across the district are pre-K grades, our K grades, and sometimes I understand why that age level may be hard to get students to school, but it impacts our scores and also impacts some of the CUSAC work the state just takes to look at numbers. Sometimes we do understand that students need to be in school, and we also know that we also have some dips in our subgroup performance, African-American males, our special-ed students, and also our 11th and 12th grade students sometimes feel the school is over, so they decide not to come to school. So, with schools, Mr. Redler, we have been thinking of some strategies to ensure that students continue to come to school at the high school and offer some type of opportunities of internship and other things to keep them motivated, with the understanding that, you know, the school does not over. I think I did three so far. The fourth will also be to, and I did this last year, we are about building leadership capacity within the district. I'm happy to say that the first cohort of teachers that started three years ago, about before there were now administrators within the district. Last year, we started a cohort of vice principals and supervisors who aspire to be principals. This year, I want to continue that. These meetings happen almost once a month for two hours, and it's just me and them, and we go through a lot of real-life scenarios and a lot of conversations, and I think it's benefiting the district because we are building capacity from within. And when you can hire people from within that understand the district, understand the needs of the families, understand the students, I feel we will be better successful. And I don't want to say that I'm not, you know, if I hire, that somebody that I may hire outside, so don't read between the lines. I'm not saying I don't want to hire people from the outside. I just like to build from within. And the last goal for this year that I would like to add, two years ago, we moved the district into a close to a one-to-one Chromebook laptop for each and every student. We purchased a lot of laptops, and last year, we started to do some implementation, but I'm not happy personally with the implementation of the technology infusion. So, this year is really to get back to that. We have the tools now for students, and what I would like to do with some resources from the community and from order to make sure that these tools now are infused in the curricula all the way through. So, what we need to do is to provide better professional development for our teachers and also for me to be able to benchmark the work by looking at teacher lesson plans, by looking at student work samples. I believe that we can get to a level where the use of technology is used to enhance teaching. So, those are my goals for the next year.
Thank you for the thorough answer. To be clear, how many goals were met for 2017 out of the five?
Last year, there were five goals, four were met.
Wow, great. And so, moving on, voters, of course, approved the budget for the district in April, but then, you know, I'm reading an article here on Tap Into New Brunswick, July 27th, New Brunswick schools get more state aid under new funding formula, about $6.3 million of additional funds. Can somebody tell me what the district is planning to spend those funds on?
Well, we're first waiting to get that money, so that's... There's no guarantee, though, it's guaranteed rich.
So, we did not receive any additional funding. The $6.3 million that was quoted in the newspapers was the original $6.3 million that we received. In the new funding formula, we were flat. We didn't receive any more money, or did we lose any money? Okay, so, the budget accounts for, the budget already accounts for the new funding formula? Yeah, there was no change to us. Okay, so... So, we didn't have, we didn't get any more, get any less, we didn't change anything. Our budget that was approved in April will be the same budget gone forward. Okay, so the report, Tap Into, is inaccurate? I didn't read it, so I can't say, but I can tell you we didn't receive any additional monies. Okay. I wish we did, I think we deserve it. Unfortunately, we did not.
We didn't. So, we're waiting for that, $6.3. Excellent.
Anything else? Yes, just a couple of more items. Principal Negron is no longer with the district as of August 1st, is that correct?
It's a personal matter. I don't think we can publicly talk about it. If you're not, so, any other questions?
Okay, we stated at one of these meetings that August 1st was going to be his last day, which confirming that that actually happened, as was said out loud at one of the board meetings in public.
Advised by council, I think it's a personal matter. Yeah. Yeah, council says it's a personal matter and not prudent to talk at this time, so. Anything else? We're nearing the end of the time, so.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. So, the agenda for this meeting was not available on the website as of 1:30 PM today, on the business administrator's office, didn't hear back. Just think that, you know, it's best practice to have the agenda out much sooner. City Council is able to get their agenda out every Friday. They don't meet till Wednesday. That's five days in advance, and it is posted to the website for the public to see. And, you know, today, we're talking less than five hours. So, I'd like to see in the future the agendas posted more swiftly. I do, you know, got the pleasure of seeing you speak at your church, and I thought it was really cool that the service was broadcast live and on the internet. I think that, you know, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, I'm sure you all missed me very much, but was not able to get it on video, and therefore, it's my understanding there's no audio or video record of that meeting. And I think that, you know, in the interest of transparency and, you know, if anybody for any purpose needs to go back and see what was said at a certain meeting, it's at the very least a good practice to get a, you know, $20 audio recorder, that you can have an audio record of what was said. But many districts are indeed broadcasting their meetings live on the internet. Many have broadcast them live on cable television for a long time, and I think this district, for no other reason than to share all the great things that are going on in the schools, ought to join them and broadcast the meetings. Finally, I do want to ask about the water testing. We've been hearing about it being in the works for several months. Are there anything to report, any results that have come in from that water test?
We're wrapping up right now, so I would think within a week. I just need to review some information, get to the board, and then we'll provide it on the website, but preliminary looks really good, so.
So, some results have come in?
I have got a report that I'm reviewing right now. I haven't gone over with the board. So, as soon as I do that, go over with them, I'll make sure that we're good, and we'll be ready for September.
Okay, and, you know, would you be able to share that report with me?
My quick review of what, at this meeting? Right now, the preliminary results are very good, optimistic, but I need to go through the data on that, and I will review it with the board. We'll put it on the website, and we'll have that done before school starts.
Okay, and if I just email you tomorrow, would you be able to send me the report?
No, not until the review from myself and the board, and then we'll provide that on the website.
Okay, I just, you know, I don't understand why it couldn't be shared immediately.
Any, Charlie, any questions?
Yeah, you know, why can't the public have access to this report that, you know, taxpayer dollars paid for right away?
Well, we just said that the public will see the report, it'll be posted on the website, as most districts do, so.
Even the state guidelines as far as the mandatory report, which obviously, you know, this is not a mandated report, allows the board and the district time to review the report to make sure there's no inconsistencies in correct data. There's a lot of test samples done to make sure it's valid data before something goes out on the website and creates an issue that needs to be checked first. So, when we be if the data is correct from my end, I will share the results with the board, discuss it, and then we'll provide it at that time.
Okay, is it blue corporation again?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and when was, when did it get received?
Charlie, we've, it's been a little longer than the time, so we've tried to be generous with time, so. It'll be posted, it'll be posted for the public to see, so. I think it's important for the public to see, and we're going to post it, so.
Okay, I just, I don't understand the reason for the holdup, and I also don't understand the date that it's been received. If it's already in, if the board's already received it, I don't understand why it's not being talked about tonight.
Charlie, those are details he didn't say, that he has it ready for discussion tonight. So, as I said, we're going to post it publicly, so. As soon as it's ready for public, you know, for sending to the public through the website, we're going to do it, so. Thanks so much for your time. Are there any other comments, any other public comments? Hearing done, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Sir, somebody would like to speak.
Is there something? Good evening, could you state your name?
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. I'd like to say thank you, appreciation to our coaches of New Brunswick High School and our security guards of New Brunswick High School, due to I know a lot of them take the time of their own to help the children with sports and all. Financially, I truly will say thank you, due to where I have been seeing what's been going on, due to where my nephew goes to school here, and I see how sometimes it could be hard for some families where these coaches are really coming. Coaches and security guards are really coming out financially out of their pocket, helping our children with sports and all, picking them up, using their gas. I really would just like to say thank you. I can't list all of them, no, all of them, but yes, for our sports, I truly appreciate your help with, due to where you look out for our kids and making them stronger and better sports for our children. Thank you. Now, one, I've been talking to the city council, I'm a parent, due to where I'm all about safety for our children. Where the past two months with the city, I've been saying, I think it's time for you to raise the price for crossing guards to $15 an hour, due to where Paul Robinson will be opening, you will need at least another 10 crossing guards to be, due to where you're opening the school to have friendly protection, due to where I spoke to the city, the police department, they told me to come to the Board of Education meeting to speak to the Board of Education, they're okay. I hope you can raise the price to $15, due to where I know one of your best retirees is from Lee Avenue and Sandberg. I know one that hit five over the building school on the Houston Avenue. one that hit quite Roosevelt School on the Liston Avenue, another one where he's out on medical. So yes, I believe that it's time for you to raise the price to get, try to get some, honestly, I'm not going to say younger ones out there, but due to where, yes, you can get some younger ones, and basically what, for that pay, what you're getting, the main ones who are retired who are out of disability, but yes, please, I hope you do raise the price so you can have backup for, okay, when somebody is out, due to where how the police department said, okay, there's a one, a crossing guard out, that, okay, they're too busy to cover, so will you please?
We'll take that under advisement, thank you.
Well, like I said, I hope so for the safety mainly of Paul Robinson's school, due to where, what, you're going to need plenty more crossing guards, due to where it's not going to be the bus, the bus, how they used for doing their lights, the traffic. So like I said, hopefully, as soon as possible, we will do that, due to where school will be coming soon.
Well, thanks, thanks for the comment. Anything else?
Oh, yeah, yes, like I said, I'm all about safety, that's where also I've been going at the city, and for Liston Avenue, right on middle, middle school, due to where they said it's been approved to reduce the speed limit on the Liston Avenue, due to where when you let kids get out of school, even though you still have crossing guards there, due to where, what, 35 miles per hour, that is still pretty fast, that would, where it's been approved to go down to 25 miles per hour, still in the way, due to where they're saying that, okay, that they're going to put the flashers up like you had in front of every other school, please reduce speed. I hope you can speak up to the city and the state or the county by time school does open up there for middle school, because this has been going way back, and like I say, I do speak up safely for our children, so I hope they still be ready by time it is to open up school.
Thanks, we'll take that under advisement, thank you.
And then also, far and due to where, for Roosevelt School and Liston School, I hope we will have funds to help out with cooling these schools, these two schools off with air conditioning, due to where how they don't have to have early dismissal, what if you happen to have another heat wave come through, due to where they have to go home because the schools are not cooled. That's where two months ago, what, it's on video, due to where the city's saying, what, the board of education needs money to help out, that they surely will help out. So I hope you will look into that too, where, like I said, Roosevelt School and Liston School has not been, I renovated, updated like all the other schools, so I hope you will look into that also.
Well, thank you, thank you. I think we're about the time, but we'll definitely take that under advisement.
Well, like I said, if you're surely looking into, just tell the city, like I said, it's on video about two months ago, and said, okay, if the board of education needs help with it, they surely will help looking into it.
Thank you.
So that shouldn't be a problem at all, so be an improvement between the board of education and the city, easy.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And then I, I'm not sure to ask this all over this way, but actually, I would like to ask, what would I be able to go, do the change in address? Would I be able to, I'm not saying do I have to wait till school is open?
A change in address for what?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
For what, what?
A student, my son, student.
What is the process? Is anybody able to?
You can just go to your home school now, and...
Oh, so it is open, okay, do it, well, going regular hours, middle school would be open, and I can change that?
Yeah, you just need to bring proof of, you know, the change in address, and give that proof to the staff at the school, and they'll be able to change that for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, as a public?
My name is Gianna Hernandez, my address is 201 Palace Street. I'm a resident in New Brunswick, and I'm also an employee, I'm a school nurse in New Brunswick. I know some resolutions, and we've had some change to policies, and some of these policy changes are very concerning to me, as we have quite an increase in my office, at least in the catch here, regarding student suicide prevention and substance abuse. Will those policies be published and available to employees? And Ms. Anton Smith, will that impact our procedure in dealing with students, the change in policy?
Good evening. Yes, the policies, once approved, will be available on web as they all are. As far as procedures, the procedures that we have remain in place and be enhanced, especially in the crisis area. And we've added additional also social workers in some areas for this very reason.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? No, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the resolutions? There's a second?
Sergeant.
Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewald.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number 13, the Finance Committee report, Ms. Sadowski.
Finance met earlier this afternoon, and I need a motion to accept the finance report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewald.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, but I'm standing on page five and six.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Excuse me, yes.
Motion approved.
Item 14, I'll read the resolution for closed session, and we'll vote afterwards. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 to 6, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege, now therefore be resolved, the aforesaid subjects to be discussed in closed session by the Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public, when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion?
So long.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewald.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.